Members of the council, we do have quorum. I would call this meeting to order. The Clerk has advised that we do have quorum. Members of the council, please rise if you are able for the National Anthem.
(Music)
Please remain standing and join me in observing a moment of silence in memory of Chi Chiang Chung, Julia Cleveland, David Prochet, Razan Rahman, Anna Sherlock, and five members of the Toronto Public Service from Toronto Shelter and Support Services. Thank you. I would like to take a moment on behalf of council to acknowledge the indigenous peoples of all the lands that we are on today. We do this to reaffirm our commitment and responsibility in improving relationships between nations and to deepening our own understanding of indigenous peoples and their cultures. It is a moment to reflect on the importance of this land, which we each call home. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Onishna Bay, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat people, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit and the Williams Treaty signed with multiple Mississaugas and Chipewa bands. For the benefit of those who are connected to the Internet, City Clerk has posted all of the agenda materials for today's meeting at toronto.ca/council. This meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting and is being streamed live on YouTube. I'd like to welcome the public who are here with us today and who are watching the meeting online. Members, we do have a presentation this morning to recognise the 150 years of firefighting in Toronto. I would like to call Palmeira Chow to give the presentation.
Good morning. We are pleased to have joining us today a number of guests, including fire chief Larry Kukul, deputy fire chief Jim Jessup, Paul Fitzgerald, Kevin Helmuton, and Laura Boyd, along with other Toronto services staff members. President James Reid of the Toronto Professional Firefighters Association and their executive team are also here. Chief Bertram Shala from Toronto Paramedic Services, and the staff superintendent Brett Nicole from Toronto Police Services, along with members of the Toronto Fire Historical Society, Toronto Fire Service Honour Guards, Toronto Fire Service Pipe and Drum Band, and Toronto Fire Services World Veterans Association Colour Guard, welcome to the council chamber. The city of Toronto is proud to have a fire service that delivers world-class fire protection services to the people who live, work, and play in the city. Today, we have the privilege of celebrating 150 years of dedicated fire protection services in the city of Toronto, an incredible milestone that highlights our longstanding commitment to safety and community resilience. For many years, Toronto was served by a volunteer fire department, and in 1874, the city council of the day saw the importance of a full-time fire department to give the residents of Toronto the best fire protection service possible. At the time, the full-time department had just over 36 full-time members and used five horse-drawn fire engines, but they were at the fire stations day and night. Since that time, the city has transformed dramatically. The five horses have been replaced with 124 trucks, cobblestone streets replaced by pavement, and wooden homes by concrete towers reaching high into the sky. By the late '80s, the six fire departments serving each district corner of the pre-amalgamated city became one, and we now have a fire service with 3,327 full-time staff serving the residents, businesses, and visitors of Toronto, providing service from 84 fire stations around the city. Today, we celebrate this incredible milestone. We are joined by members of the Fire Services and the Toronto Professional Firefighters Association, and countless others, both past and present, that represent the rich history and legacy of Toronto Fire Services. This dedication of our Toronto Fire Services is commendable. Their commitment to courage, compassion, and service reflects the core values that guide them in protecting our community. Celebrating 150 years of world-class fire protection service is a remarkable achievement, and one I, as the mayor, and we, as city council, are incredibly proud of. This achievement highlights the professionalism through changing times. We, as a city council, remain committed to supporting these vital services, ensuring that the residents of Toronto continue to receive world-class fire protection services. So, on behalf of Toronto City Council and the residents of Toronto, congratulations on this achievement, and thank you for protecting our city. And now, we will conclude this presentation with a short video highlighting 150 years of firefighting in Toronto. Let's give them a big round of applause before we start the video.[1132.17][1132.17](Applause)
Counselor Fletcher?
Thank you, Speaker. Very hard act to follow, a fantastic, fantastic video. I just want to stand up for a second because this 150th anniversary is such an important one. It also fell at the same time as the open house that Toronto Fire has every year. And I was so pleased because the Fire Academy is in my ward I attended with the mayor, and there was over 2,000 Torontonians who took advantage and came through that day. They saw so many things, they got education on fire, they saw how firefighters run up buildings, they saw everything, and so many kids said, "I want to be a firefighter." So, that was pretty exciting. Unfortunately, also, as the mayor pointed out, the statistic on the number of homes that have smoke detectors is only four every four out of 10 homes. So, that's a very low number, and I think probably on this 150th anniversary, all of us as councillors and our communications could certainly, certainly promote that a bit more because that's quite a surprising statistic. I also note that shortly after, very close to the Fire Academy, just down the street on McGee, there was a fire that night where three homes were burnt because of somebody fixing their roof and couldn't put the fire out. And, of course, our fire department was right there and got it out, and as always, as always, kept me in the loop as councillor as to what was happening and how difficult that fire was. So, I just want to thank everybody again for that. Because when we were at Chief Peg's retirement, there was something very special that he got. He got a lot of special things and a lot of accolades. It was a wonderful evening. But we also got, from the historic services, the historical group in Toronto Fire, we got the actual motion from city council in 1874 that set up the fire department in the city of Toronto. And it was very special, and thank you so much for bringing that here today. So, I can share a motion that was very successful 150 years later that basically says, "Your committee therefore recommend that a company be organised to consist of 36 men." Now, I'll just stop there for a second because our firefighting contingent is full of men and women. So, a very different day 150 years ago. Don't feel badly. You're here now, you weren't there then. "...whose full time and attention shall be devoted to their duties as firemen and properly drilled therein, which will not only meet the requirements of having men/women on the spot to render the necessary assistance in getting the engines speedily to work on all occasions of fire, but will also be more effective for general purposes as firemen than a larger company of men who are generally, every day, at work at their various kinds of employment." I don't need to remind you that the force was an all-volunteer force of 41 people, and with this declaration and this committee declaration, it became 36 full-time firefighters in the city of Toronto. "The difference in cost between the partially paid company and a company of 36 men would be about $12,000 per year, which your committee have no doubt would be more than compensated by the greater efficiency of the department." All of this is respectfully submitted Committee Room, Toronto, July 22, 1874. James B. Bosted, Chairman/Chair. Anyway, that is very exciting to see that. Counselor Cendevale was there, he's not here this morning, but he said, "I wonder if there were any amendments," which I thought was very funny, but there weren't. It was a straight-up, "Here is the motion, here is what we're doing, here we're setting up a fire department that has done us proud for 150 years." So, to all of those who have served with courage, compassion, and service, which is the motto of the fire services here in Toronto, I just think we owe them all a big, deep debt of gratitude and a big thank you for serving, always, with courage, compassion, and service. Thank you very much, Speaker, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Fletcher. Thank you, Counselor Fletcher. Counselor Bravo?
Thank you. As Chair of Economic and Community Development Committee, I also want to build on this spirit of gratitude. I think that looking at the video and knowing the story, this is one of the best examples of what we can do when we pool our resources together as a society and build a professional service that offers us the protection that we need when we need it the most, in the worst crises. Yes, it's the fires, it's also the hazards, environmental hazards, and it's the education and support. No matter who you are or where you live, and even if you don't have a home, the Toronto Fire Service is there to make sure people are safe. I think when you look at the video and you know the story of this fire service, it's a story of growing commitment from the city in building the infrastructure that's needed to provide this service, but it's also the story of the people, of the need to constantly improve safety for them, for firefighters, working conditions, and the continuum of care, which I think we should be really proud of in this fire service, which has led on the focus on trauma support and recovery. And it's something that I feel very proud of to say and to stand before you and to congratulate you on that. This is really, you know, also about celebrating all of the catastrophes that haven't happened because of prevention and all the work that's done to make sure that we don't get that call in the middle of the night. I get the call, I've had a five-alarm fire at Dover Court in Blor. The partnership... and so efficiently to ensure that the minimal amount of harm has been done and the most amount of work has been done to protect and support communities in that incredibly difficult and sometimes tragic circumstance. They're always there to lend a helping hand, whether it is, you know, disasters like we're seeing through the climate crisis, or whether it's assisting a neighbor in need, very often being the first ones on-site and making sure that folks are reassured about what will happen next. And to our firefighters, all of the ones who are here and who are part of the service in every corner of the city, thank you for this commitment, thank you for your courage and your selfnesses, thank you for being the heroes that our city needs, and thank you for our continued work together.
Thank you. I understand the city solicitor would like to make an introduction.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I wanted to welcome and introduce our six new Articling students that are here with us for a year. If you could stand up, and I will say your names and hopefully pronounce them all correctly. Amanda Owusu, Nicole Voskel, Isha Patel, Yelda Nuri, Camilla Conti, and Douglas Laforce. So they'll be working in the legal department for the next year.
Thank you and welcome. May I have a motion to confirm the minutes? Moved by Councillor Pasternak. So if you can move, read the motion, please. Oh, sorry, sorry, there you go.
That City Council confirmed the minutes from the regular meeting held on July 24th and 25th, 2024, and the special meeting held on September 5th, 2024, in the form supplied to the members.
Thank you. All those in favor, show hands, opposed if any carried. I will now call upon the committee chairs to introduce the reports. The chairs can speak about the reports for up to five minutes. Mayor Chow, you have a motion to introduce the Executive Committee report?
I do, and the motion is that the report from meeting 17 of the Executive Committee listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration. Madam Speaker, we have quite a long meeting, and it was, there were many items, we went into the evening. The first one, 17.1, is building a universal student food program in Toronto, something that I've been working on for many decades, since the late 80s, early 90s. And what is in front of you is a plan, asking for a more comprehensive plan, but to start, we're looking to see if we could feed 8,000 kids as of January 1st, because the winter is going to be tough. We know that Thanksgiving is upon us, and it will be a tough year for Daily Bread Food Bank because the needs have increased, because the rent is so high, and people even working with several jobs are having a hard time making ants meat, which means that right now, 10:15, 10:13, there are children in schools across Toronto that may not be able to focus because they are hungry. So this program, this, this motion in front of us in Executive asks us to come back with a plan in November, the cost and how we're going to do it. The next item is something that we debated quite a bit, which is the electric ferries. You have seen a different discussion about whether our ferry is safe. Of course, it is safe, there was a presentation at the Executive about our ferry services, and that if we, because we have ordered the electric ferries, we want to make sure that there is the dock that could accommodate these new ferries, plus people, there'd be more people able to be on these ferries, so the dock and the whole area needs some kind of change. The next item, Madam Speaker, is one that I believe you are very, very interested in because last year, the rollout of the VHT caused us a lot of anguish, a lot of seniors were scared, those that cannot speak English didn't know what to do, they were crying on the phone, they were lined up at City Hall and all the centers trying to figure out, because there are 160,000 homeowners receiving a note to say that their tax have gone up dramatically, which scared them, and it was unnecessary, it was a big mistake. So this year, in this report, it's a redesign of the entire program, and it, there's a lot of details in it, and I think there will be a presentation for members of council so that you can become familiar with it, because it's quite different than last year. It's a lot easier to apply, there will be a lot more communication, multilingual communication, and there's perhaps some members of council will have some suggestions to improve it even further. Well, that item is going to be on, and I do know that the city staff have worked very hard, and I believe they visited about two-thirds of members of council in coming up with this plan. So those of you that have not had the time to visit, to get a briefing, you will see it today, so put your thinking cap on. How do you think this can be improved and let the city staff know? And because it is a very important initiative that we've done for several years. The, judging from the folks from Billy Bishop Airport, welcome to council chamber, we will be discussing that item on these runway and safety areas, and on how we could make sure the passengers are safe and continue to support the airport. That item, I believe, will have a lot of discussion because there are different options out there, and then the questions about cost and financing, et cetera. So it's sort of complex, and I believe the city staff can certainly answer several questions, whether it's option 1, 2, or 3, and the financing and the tripartite agreement, et cetera. I know I'm running out of time, just one, one other item that's really important, because Councillor Moise has been really pushing on the St. Lawrence Centre. Can we afford it, will we be able to go ahead? That item is also on, and there are, one item that you might be interested in, Madam Speaker, is that the water capital budget, 2024 budget and the capital budget adjustment, because that is where the funds comes from on flood mitigation. So a very heavy agenda that is in front of us and lots to discuss.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Moise, you have a motion to introduce the Board of Health report?
Yes, I do. That the report from meeting 16 of the Board of Health listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration. Last month, the Board of Health returned to session with a full agenda of items pertaining to the health and wellbeing of our city. Top of our minds with the beginning of the school year was a student nutrition program. Today, at the board's request, we have received a report from our Medical Office of Health outlining a phased approach to realizing a universal student nutrition program, an expansion for which there is critical need. Also pressing has been response to provincial announcement of changes to the regulation of safe consumption sites and $378 million in funding for new homeless and addiction recovery treatment known as Heart Hubs. Following this announcement, Toronto Public Health was notified by the province that supervised consumption services at 277 Victoria Street will cease by March 31, 2025. As we learn more about what the new regulations mean for sites across the city, we have been working to determine the path forward to ensure that people are able to receive the full continuum of care and services that they need. At our last meeting, the board requested that the province continue to fund all currently operating supervised consumption services and consumption and treatment services sites beyond March 31, 2025, and all supervised consumption services to be housed at the new Heart Hubs. Finally, as the year begins to draw to a close, so does our time with Dr. Devilla as our Medical Office of Health. Preparations for her departure continue as the Medical Officer of Health Hiring Committee has conducted preliminary interviews with a number of highly qualified candidates from across the country. We will be ready to appoint a new Medical Office of Health at our November board meeting before seeking council approval in December. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Councillor Chang, you have a motion to introduce a Civic Appointments Committee report?
Yes, I would like to move that the report from meeting 18 of the Civic Appointments Committee listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration. I just want to encourage my councillor colleagues to promote our many, many boards where people can participate. We want people to know that their voices matter, and it's a very meaningful way. Sometimes we are wrestling at civic appointments because we're not sure that we're getting the diverse pool that we wish we could have. And so the website that you can direct everyone to is toronto.ca/shaperyourcity. I hope that you can include it in your newsletters, and let's make our boards and committees representative of the diversity of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bravo, you have a motion to introduce the Economic and Community Development Committee report?
I do, thank you, Speaker. I moved that the report from meeting 15 of the Economic and Community Development Committee listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration. I just want to speak briefly to some of the highlights of our 15th meeting. We appointed the first youth poet laureate, Shahada Jack, to great, to great celebration in the community and among organizations representing youth. We heard about the expansion of the Diversity Fellows Program, an update of the program which will include vital Indigenous youth fellow program that's been thoughtfully and carefully crafted by staff in consultation with community. And we heard the report of the Los Angeles Mission, which was highly successful, and highlighting the stability of our film industry in Toronto, the concierge services that are offered to the industry, and the quality of our crews and our workers, our workforce here in Toronto. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you. Councillor Rensley, you have a motion to introduce General Government Committee report?
Good morning, Madam Speaker. That the report from meeting number 16 of the General Government Committee listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McElvee, you have a motion to introduce Infrastructure and Environment Committee report?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. That the report from meeting 16 of the Infrastructure and Environment Committee listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration. There are some great topics on there, everybody loves congestion, right? So there's a report on that, and everybody loves construction, there's a report on that too, and we all love EV chargers, and there's a report on that. So I do ask that you do try to advance, circulate your motions so that we can move efficiently through the infrastructure items and also have staff review those from a technical standpoint. I will say on congestion, the report is exceptional, and it was very well-prepared by city staff. And importantly, it doesn't just talk about the new recommendations, the new things they're adding, but there are tables that are in there that describe all the actions that are underway, and there will be soon a dashboard that is launched. So I think it's important that we remember that while we're only voting on a few motions today related to congestion, there is a very large body of work around that, so please also have a look at that as you prepare your motions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Perch, you have a motion to introduce the Planning and Housing Committee report?
Thank you, Speaker. Just looking for my motion here. Oh, there it is. I move that the report from meeting 15 of the Planning and Housing Committee listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration. And given that it was one of our shorter meetings, this is one of the shorter speeches to introduce an item.
Thank you. Councillor Holliday, do you have a motion to introduce the Atobaco York Community Council report?
I do, thank you, and good morning to you, Madam Speaker. I would like to move that the report from meeting 16 of the Atobaco York Community Council listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Holliday, do you have a motion to introduce the Atobaco York Community Council report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. That the report from meeting 17 of North York Community Council listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration.
Thank you. Councillor Mantis, you have a motion to introduce the Scarborough Community Council report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. That the report from meeting 16 of the Scarborough Community Council listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McElvee, you have a motion to introduce Infrastructure and Environment Committee report?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. That the report from meeting 16 of the Infrastructure and Environment Committee listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration. There are some great topics on there, everybody loves congestion, right? So there's a report on that, and everybody loves construction, there's a report on that too, and we all love EV chargers, and there's a report on that. So I do ask that you do try to advance, circulate your motions so that we can move efficiently through the infrastructure items and also have staff review those from a technical standpoint. I will say on congestion, the report is exceptional, and it was very well-prepared by city staff. And importantly, it doesn't just talk about the new recommendations, the new things they're adding, but there are tables that are in there that describe all the actions that are underway, and there will be soon a dashboard that is launched. So I think it's important that we remember that while we're only voting on a few motions today related to congestion, there is a very large body of work around that, so please also have a look at that as you prepare your motions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Perch, you have a motion to introduce the Planning and Housing Committee report?
Thank you, Speaker. Just looking for my motion here. Oh, there it is. I move that the report from meeting 15 of the Planning and Housing Committee listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration, and given that it was one of our shorter meetings, this is one of the shorter speeches to introduce an item.
Thank you. Councillor Holliday, do you have a motion to introduce the Atobaco York Community Council report?
I do, thank you, and good morning to you, Madam Speaker. I would like to move that the report from meeting 16 of the Atobaco York Community Council listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor, Councillor Pasternak, you have a motion to introduce the North York Community Council report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. That the report from meeting 17 of North York Community Council listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration.
Thank you. Councillor Mantis, you have a motion to introduce the Scarborough Community Council report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. That the report from meeting 16 of the Scarborough Community Council listed on the That the report from meeting sixteen of the Scarborough Community Council listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Moyes, you have a motion to introduce the Toronto and East York Community Council report?
That the report, meeting sixteen of the Toronto and East York Community Council listed on the agenda for council be presented for consideration.
May I have a motion to introduce the new business from the mayor and city officials? Moved by councillor Cosanty. If you can read the motion. There you go.
Thank you, speaker, and good morning. That the new business from the mayor and city officials listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration.
Thank you. All those in favor, show of hands. Posed if any, carried. Are there any declarations of interest at this time? Please indicate the item number and the nature of the interest and remember that you must also file a written declaration of your interest with the city clerk. I don't see any. I will now call for petitions. Are there any petitions at this time? Okay. Members, I will now review the order paper. And when we review the order paper, once the order paper has been approved by council, any change will need a two-thirds vote. City clerk has posted today's order paper online with agenda item RM 22.7, review of the order paper. If council adopts any amendments to the order paper, they will also be posted with this item. We have one deferred item before us today, EC 14.11, and the mayor has designated item EX 17.5 on Billy Bishop Toronto City Airport runway and safety areas as their first key matter and first item of business today. The mayor has designated EX 17.1 on building a universal student food program in Toronto as their second key matter as first item of business tomorrow. The notice to motion run through is scheduled for 2:00 p.m. tomorrow, only if the mayor's key matters are completed. Members, there are some related matters on the agenda that I propose be considered together if they are held. Items IE 16.2 and IE 16.4 relating to infrastructure program coordination and congestion management. The city clerk has noted the items that members wish to hold and I will now go through the items to take additional member holds. I will review the order paper one section at a time. The clerk will open the speakers list and CMP and you can place your name on the list. When I recognize you, state the item or items you wish to hold and I will go through the agenda one section at a time. Okay, we'll start with Executive Committee. Board of Health. I don't see any names on the screen. So the Board of Health item A shall 16.9 is here without a recommendation. So you would like to hold the item down?
Yes.
It's here without a recommendation and we do have a supplementary report on that, 16.9A. We'll now go to councillor Cosanty. Are you with Civic Appointments?
I am.
You got your name up there?
I do and I do apologize. I missed one at executive, if I could go back to that.
Sure, which item?
Very quickly, item EX 17.14, City Toronto Reserve Fund Balances.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So we'll now go to Civic— It was EX 17.14, City of Toronto Reserve and Reserve Fund Balances as of June 30th. So we'll go Civic Appointments next. Economic and Community Development Committee report. General Government. Councillor Ainsley?
Thank you, madam speaker. GG 16.12, order of document number four—sorry, it's the GFL for curbside collection. I'm not going to read the whole thing.
So you're holding that item down, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's on GG 16.12. Infrastructure and Environment Committee report. Councillor Moyes?
I want to hold EC 14.11.
You wanted to hold what?
EC 14.11.
EC?
Yeah. Oh, it's a deferred item. Can I hold that item?
It's already held.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Bradford?
Thanks, madam speaker. I'd like to hold IE 16.2, enhancing capital infrastructure program coordination. I have two motions that I've worked on with staff and run past the chair and so I'm going to advance, circulate those for everybody to look at and then we can quickly—
Okay, that's on IE 16.2, thank you. Councillor Pasternak?
Yes, thank you, madam speaker. I'd like to hold two items, IE 16.4, the congestion management plan, as well as IE 16.8, fossil fuel advocacy advertising.
Okay, Planning and Housing. Councillor Bradford, do you have one on Planning and Housing? No? Councillor Pasternak, I see your name. Okay. Planning and Housing, anything? No?
Yes.
Oh, councillor Perks? Just one sec. Councillor Perks?
Yes, speaker. I had held PH 15.3, which is the affordable—or the social housing project at 35 Bellevue Avenue, and I'm prepared to release that. Oh, I'll continue to hold it then.
Okay, continue to hold. Okay, thank you. Councillor Holliday?
Thank you, speaker. I would like to hold PH 15.1, official plan policy amendments for infrastructure projects in parks and open spaces.
Thank you. Etobicoke York Community Council. Okay. North York Community Council. Scarborough Community Council.
Oh, madam speaker, I have something for North York. I put my name down.
Okay, it just came on. Councillor Chang?
Yes, I'd like to hold NY 17.27, please. I have a technical amendment that's being—
NY 17.—
27. 461 Shepherd Avenue East.
27. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
On Scarborough Community Council—council—councillor Candevale?
I'd like to hold SC 16.1.
Yeah, and that's here without a recommendation. Thank you. Any more on Scarborough? Okay, Toronto and East York Community Council. Councillor Sax?
Yes, thank you. Staff have asked me to hold TE 16.29, 16.30, and 16.31 for minor wording changes.
Okay, 16.29, 16.30, and 16.31?
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Moyes?
Speaker, yes, madam speaker. I'd like to hold TE 16.4, 16.5, and—
Okay, just one sec, please. I don't know shorthand.
I can teach you.
Okay, 16.4.
16.5.
Okay.
And 16.13.
16—yes, that's here without a recommendation, 16.13.
That's correct.
Right, thank you. Councillor Holliday?
Thanks, speaker. TE 16.20, which is corridor safety review Mortimer Avenue between Pape Avenue and Broadview Avenue. I have some questions of staff, so just an alert, if I can speak to them offline, it'd be great. Thank you.
So you're going to hold the item down?
I will hold the item. Thank you.
New Business. Councillor Perks?
Yes, speaker. I had held CC 22.7, amending item 2024 PH 114.1 in response to Bill 97 proclamation, employment area land use permissions. I'm happy to release it. Just for members, this is a technical thing. Our current official plan permissions reflect old legislation and what this item does is bring our employment land permissions into conformity with the new legislation. And this is just a minor wording change that staff had to make to make all of that go through.
Okay, so councillor Perks—
CC 22.7.
Yeah, councillor Perks wants to release CC 22.7, New Business. Okay? On favor, posed if any, carried. Thank you. Councillor Moyes, under New Business.
I'd like to hold CC 22.12, the 33 Maitland Street and 37 Maitland Street.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further holds on New Business? No? Okay, thank you. We will now—
Or timed items?
I will now— We will now consider our request to make items urgent and time-specific. If you can put your name on the screen, please. The clerk will open the speakers list and CMP and you can place your name on the list. Councillor McElvee?
Thank you.
Just one sec. There, councillor McElvee?
Thank you. I'd like to debate 16.2 on construction and 16.4 on congestion together. Those items were held and have it as the first item after the mayor's key first item.
Okay. On favor, carried. Mayor Chow?
It's a—I'm asking for 15 minutes before 12:30. We adjourn slightly earlier because councillor Pasternak has a Rosh Hashanah celebration upstairs, I believe, so—
Okay, so the mayor is recommending that we recess at 12:15 today. On favor, carried. Thank you.
I've been unable to get on. IT is here now to assist. I'd like to make time-specific EX 17.17 update on the St. Lawrence Centre for the Arts Redevelopment Project.
Okay, I don't think they can hear you. Can you speak into the mic?
Oh, thank you, speaker. Time-specific EX 17.17 update on the St. Lawrence Centre for the Arts Redevelopment Project and that—I'd like to have that after the members' motions tomorrow afternoon, please.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All those in favor of adopting the balance of the order paper as amended and all items now held, please raise your hands. On favor, show of hands. Posed if any, carried. Members, I want to remind you that regardless of whether you are attending today's meeting by video conference or in person, you will continue to submit and approve your motions in advance. The clerk staff are available to assist you with motions. If you do not have your motion ready, I will not recognize you. I'm also reminding members that you must state your motion first before you speak to it. Members, if you have an urgent motion without notice you wish to bring forward at this meeting and your secondary must submit it by email to the clerk staff. Your motion must also clearly state the reason for urgency. Staff will prepare the necessary procedure motion for my review along with your motion. I will review all motions without notice carefully. I may ask you to provide more information about the urgency of your motion and why it can't be routed through normal committee channels. This will inform my decision on whether to consent to your motion and in turn, council's decision about whether to add your motion to the agenda. The purpose of your motion and your reason for urgency must be made very clear. I will advise council after each recess which motions I have agreed on that are urgent and need a motion to add to the agenda. It will require 18 votes to add a motion without notice to the agenda during the meeting. Motions added to the agenda in this way are not subject to a vote to waive referral to a committee or agency. We will now go to the mayor's first key item, which is EX 17.5. So on 17.5, which is the Billy Bishop Toronto City Airport. So do we have any questions of staff? If you do— Councillor Fletcher?
We're having this issue again like we had last time.
Pardon?
Where I've said, I think we're having this issue again where there's not everybody here, but we don't know who's online. So that—the public doesn't know, I don't know, that's a bit odd. I think we used to have that—
Yeah, I—maybe—
Because they're on YouTube and they see that, but we don't see it. So I've only got two devices. I don't know how to set up the YouTube as well. I don't think I should have three. So I don't know what the issue is. We used to have that on our screens and understand who was here and who was—
Yes.
So I just find that a bit off-putting and troubling.
Thank—thank you.
Is there some way to deal with that? I'm asking what we're dealing—how we're dealing with that.
Okay, so we'll check with staff on—because can you actually tell me who's on the screen? Because I don't see anything either.
You can't tell either?
No.
Oh, gee. I know you're—
Okay, so let the staff work on that for a while, councillor Fletcher, okay? Thank you. Okay, thank you. Well, before we go to the mayor's first key item for questions, it is past 10:30. And councillor Bravo, you wish to make an introduction on the Davenport-Pirth Community Neighborhood and Community House Centre. Councillor Bravo?
Thank you so much, speaker. I want to draw council's attention to the presence with us today of the Participatory Democracy Group, a committee that I've been meeting with at Davenport-Pirth Neighborhood Centre. And to recognize— Please stand up. Please—to recognize that there's more than four decades here of local community leadership, volunteering, participation, trying to motivate residents to become more active in democracy. And so it's been a real privilege for me to work with all of you and to learn from you. Just want to welcome you, the observing council today. Welcome.
So we'll go to EX 17.5 and—mayor, do you know if your students are in?
No, my— No, I'm putting out that—
The staff has a presentation on this item?
Oh, okay. But do you know if the grade five students are here that you're going to introduce? No?
I don't see them yet.
Okay, we'll wait until they come and then we'll acknowledge the students.
Ask them that arrived at—
Okay, so I believe that the staff has the presentation on this item, which is EX 17.5.
Good morning, members of council. My name is David Stonehouse and I am the director of the city's waterfront secretary. Before I begin, I just want to acknowledge— of the City's Waterfront Secretariat. Before I begin, I just want to acknowledge that there are staff here from Ports Toronto and from Transport Canada. Thank you to them for coming today. Just by way of preamble, staff felt that it was important to emphasize that this report, this decision is not about closing the Billy Bishop Toronto City Airport. This report is about how best to achieve compliance with a new federal aviation safety requirement, runway and safety areas. In a tight timeframe, design and construction must be advanced rapidly for Ports Toronto to meet Transport Canada's July 12, 2027 deadline. And longer term, this report and this decision is about the need for a broader discussion about the future of the airport, best achieved through an airport master plan update that would be led by Ports Toronto. In terms of the new regulations, there is a new federal airport safety requirement that must be met at all of Canada's airports for runway and safety areas. The intention of these runway and safety areas is to reduce the severity of damage to aircraft, an aircraft if it overshoots or overruns a runway. Transport Canada has identified three ways that airports can meet runway and safety area requirements. First, to prepare natural compacted open areas at the ends of a runway. Second, to install an engineered material, an engineered material arresting system, also called EMAS, designed to decelerate an aircraft. And third, shorten a runway's declared distance so to shorten a runway. Reissa compliance is the responsibility of airports. However, approvals from others may be required. So how is the City of Toronto involved? The Billy Bishop Airport is governed by a tripartite agreement between Ports Toronto, the City of Toronto, and Transport Canada. The agreement was originally signed in 1983. It serves as both a lease and an operating agreement. And it is important to point out that the airport was operating prior to 1983. It actually has a history that goes back to World War II. Any tripartite agreement changes would require three agreement signatories to agree. At Toronto's Island Airport, runway and safety area options would require additional landmass through Lakeville, requiring a change to the tripartite agreement, and a city council decision. Ports Toronto is conducting an environmental assessment to evaluate three options for runway and safety areas implementation that would prepare natural compacted open areas. And you'll hear more about these in a minute. Options which would have shortened the runway's declared distance were not considered viable by Ports Toronto, as they would impact the Q400 aircraft operations. The Q400 planes are the planes that are used now for commercial purposes, flown by Porter, flown by Air Canada. Ports Toronto has also looked at the engineered material arresting system, and this also was not considered viable by Ports Toronto for a number of reasons, including it is a rather new technology to Canada. It hasn't been used in Canada, not considered operational in terms of cold climates, or at least challenging in terms of cold climates, and also a single supplier. So the first option for consideration, option one, which is a minimum landmass to meet the regulatory requirement. And this has been estimated by Ports Toronto at $61 to $64 million. And I should just do an aside here and to point out that the cost estimates that were shared by Ports Toronto are based on concept design only. So they're based, they are Class D cost estimates. They are not including financing costs, Port Toronto project management costs, insurance, and other related costs. And then there's also the issue of escalation that everyone is feeling in the construction world. And so these numbers are bound to go up as they are refined by Ports Toronto through the design process. So this is option one, that is really the base for the other options. Option two is the landmass plus two additional taxiways and a relocated navigational aid. So it's the minimum plus a few additional items for operational benefit, and at a cost estimate of approximately $93 to $97 million. Option three is the landmass extension, the taxiways, a noise wall, a utility corridor, and airside roads, additional airside roads at either end of the runway, which are beyond the runway, and so easier for crossings. The estimate on option three is $169 million to $175 million, again, construction costs only. This is a summary slide, which sums up the three options. And, you know, in general, what one sees, the volume of Lakeville goes up with each option, the width of landmass increases with each option. None of these options have an impact on the marine exclusion zone, so the portions of the lake, which are off limits to boats to, for safety reasons. So none of these options impact the marine exclusion zone. And none of these options extend the actual runway, so the portion, the runway that is used by the Q400 planes and other aircraft. You can see the cost estimates compared, and again, these cost estimates are preliminary and subject to change. We did some public engagement related to this issue. We had a public meeting, which was attended by approximately 250 people. And then we posted an online survey, which was, which got about 2,900 responses, just over. And the top considerations in reviewing the runway and area options include impact on environment, health impacts, impact on Hanlon's Point as a safe culturally significant queer space, waterfront revitalization, safety and regulatory compliance, costs, accessibility of the airport to the users, economic impact of the airport and its operations, and then finally transparency and public engagement and process. And these considerations are summed up in two reports, which are part of, part of the item on the city clerk's portal. In terms of staff findings, staff recommend Ports Toronto's natural compacted open area option one as the most efficient option for compliance. It provides the lowest risk scenario to achieving the mandated federal safety requirements by the July 12, 2027 federal deadline. It has a considerably lower project cost. It does not require additional counsel consideration of official plan compliance, and it provides the shortest construction timeline and smallest scope of Lakeville. A lease extension is not recommended at this time. Staff are of the view that a lease extension would require a broader public conversation through an airport master plan update. Ports Toronto's environmental assessment is not a regulatory environmental assessment. It is not a requirement of the federal or provincial governments. It is, however, a requirement of the city's official plan. It's part of the policies that relate to lakefilling and other, and other topics. Option one is incremental to options two and three, meaning that options two and three can be implemented in future phases. In terms of the broader conversation, separate from the runway and safety issue, many have noted the need for a broader discussion about the airport. And when I say many, I mean the operator, I mean Ports Toronto, the businesses that operate out of the Island Airport, and then also the community. An airport master plan update can provide a forum to consider the issues holistically. The master plan was last updated by Ports Toronto in 2018. Master plans are typically updated every 10 years. However, Ports Toronto has indicated an interest in updating it at the five-year mark or after five years, and they've talked publicly about that in recent months. An effective framework is required to facilitate a robust public and stakeholder engagement process, and this is about the third recommendation, in order to allow for a thoughtful consideration of the issues involved, many of which are quite technical in nature and require some amount of background study, and to provide transparency and accountability in decision-making. These are the recommendations summarized. So the recommendations would authorize staff to execute. The tripartite agreement changed to provide for reissiya option one, the lakefilling and the landmass extension, conditions related to the above. And then finally, staff would participate in discussions with Ports Toronto and Transport Canada on a process to update the 2018 airport master plan in advance of the expiry of the tripartite agreement, and report to the executive committee in Q2 of next year with a framework to guide this process, including funding requirements. In terms of next steps, Ports Toronto has noted that city council decisions that would enable runway and safety areas compliance are needed in late November of 2024, specifically November the 29th, to provide enough time so that construction of a new, of the new runway ends can be completed by Transport Canada's July the 12, 2027 compliance deadline. Ports Toronto will identify its preferred approach to compliance, recognizing city council's decision, and the city, Ports Toronto, and Transport Canada will finalize and execute an updated tripartite agreement.
Thank you. Okay, well, now go to questions. Counselor Point of order, Counselor Holliday.
Thank you, Speaker. Mr. Stonehouse acknowledged that Ports Toronto is in the room. I would like the opportunity to ask them questions. I understand that I have to suggest a procedure. In order to do that, I think the clerk advised that we have to go into committee of the whole. I don't think that means that we go into closed session, just to committee of the whole. But that would allow members the opportunity to ask that agency questions.
So so the question is if we've go, just a second, Counselor Fletcher, we go in camera? Is that what you're recommending?
No, no, we go into committee of the whole. I know it's unusual, but the clerk advised me that we have to do this. And that is because we need to do that in order to ask Ports Toronto questions. Otherwise, I can't.
Okay.
It's my understanding, unless you want to allow it.
Okay, I'll have to clarify that. Counselor Fletcher?
I'd like to clarify that, because I've asked to go into committee of the whole previously and been told we can't, can only be in camera. So this would be a new, great thing, where we can go and committee the whole at any time, or we decide to do that. So I'd really like to be careful with this ruling, because although I think that's fine, I can't wait for that.
Thank you. Counselor Perks.
Thank you. I believe the procedures bylaw creates an opportunity for counsel to receive advice from clerks. And on this, by going into the committee of whole, we do more than simply permit somebody else to answer questions. We do things like allow as many rounds of questions as members want. We can alter speaking times. There's a whole series of consequences, and I'd just like to understand what those are.
Okay, so I'm going to rule that out of order, because there has to be notice given in advance, and that hasn't been done. Thank you. Counselor McElvy, questions?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So my first question is, which level of government is responsible for aviation?
Through the speaker, the federal government is responsible for aviation.
Who is the regulator?
Through the speaker, the regulator is Transport Canada, a federal department.
Is Ports Toronto a federal agency?
Through the speaker, yes, the Ports Toronto is a federal agency.
Why are we recommending the preferred option for a federal agency?
Through the speaker, the City of Toronto is a signatory to the tripartite agreement. And given that, we have a responsibility to, to make decisions that are aligned with the city's official plan. And staff are of the view that the city of, the city's official plan requires that certain things be undertaken in order to, to provide for lakefilling. And so the advice that we've provided to counsel through our report is about the tripartite agreement and our role in approving tripartite agreement changes.
So is there any technical reason for objections to options one, two, or three? I didn't read any in the report.
Through the speaker, in principle, no, although it should be pointed out that some of the aspects of the options two and three, some of the ancillary features would require some further design and analysis through, through a design process.
So we have no technical objection, but it might be a little more difficult to work through the process to get it done?
In, through the, through the speaker, in principle, no.
In principle, sorry?
In principle, we would, we would not have objection to the components that are included in options two and three.
Okay, so we have no technical reason to object to a sound wall and noise mitigation?
Through the speaker, in principle, no. There are, there are a lot of details to sort through, including, for example, in the, in the sound wall, where, you know, how, how it would function, how it would, how it would operate, and who would
Sure, there's some details, but like the principle of mitigating sound is generally a good principle.
Through the speaker, yes, it is.
Do we have any technical objection to breakwaters or additional runway safety improvements at the site?
Through the chair, no, we would not, in principle, subject to design.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mois. Counselor Moise.
Thank you. And three, Madam Speaker, I also have two questions. Who is responsible for the cost of this in regards to options one, two, or three? Who occurs the cost?
Through the speaker, the cost would be to Ports Toronto, and Ports Toronto has been very transparent about that. The cost would not be on the city of Toronto.
Okay, that's good. And one of the things I've heard for the entire time I've been living in Toronto is the noise of the planes. And so knowing that that's a concern to the people of Toronto, why wasn't the noise mitigation factored in all three options?
Through the speaker, I can't speak to that. The options were designed by Ports Toronto and Ports Toronto's technical consultants, and so the noise wall mitigation was included in option three, but not included in options one or two.
So in your public consultation, they said there's 250 people who attended, and you also had 2,900 people who responded through a survey. Did anyone talk about the noise mitigation? Was that a priority for any one group of people that attended?
Through the speaker, noise is a significant topic vis a vis the airport. It has been a significant topic for quite a while now. It featured large in the Porter debate of 2014. There's a subcommittee that deals with sound issues that the airport convenes, and it has, you know, work to do in the future. Our view is that the sound issue is a big issue that is best addressed through the airport master planning process so that the conversation can be about the big picture soundwise, and so that solutions can be reviewed or potential solutions can be reviewed with the general public and airport stakeholders.
Again, this is a huge investment and a huge undertaking, and I'm still not sure why noise mitigation was not in all the options. That's really a concern to me.
So through the speaker, the best I can say is that noise is a significant issue. It deserves a lot of airtime, a lot of consideration, even some technical study, and that is best addressed through the master plan update process. The focus of our work in recent months has been on RISA compliance and working with Ports Toronto and Transport Canada in meeting the July 12th, 2027 timeline for RISA compliance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Chow, I believe that you want to do an introduction at this time?
I do. On the point of personal privilege, Council Carol has asked me to help her to welcome some very special visitors to the council chamber today here from Seneca Hall Primary School in Don Valley North, our 60 grade five students and their teacher, Virginia Long. And the students are here because they're interested in learning about municipal government's responsibility. Let's give them a big round of applause. Welcome.
Welcome. Counselor Pasternak, questions?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you, staff, I always thought it was staff's responsibility to bring us a balanced perspective on different issues that we face here, and I don't really see that here. I'm looking at a summary of the third-party public consultants who handled the public meeting, and of the nine bullet points, I see negative phraseology about the airport from number one, talking about the negative impact of the airport, number two, talking about something other than the airport, number six, talking about environmental concerns, number eight, viability and need for the Island Airport, and number nine, communal impact. Do you think that this was a balanced perspective on those who do not want the airport and those who think that the airport is a vital economic tool in our city?
Through the speaker, the report that you're referring to is the, it reflects the community engagement that was undertaken and what we heard at our public meeting and what we saw through the survey results. And people talked about a range of issues. There were many people who participated who were concerned about the airport. There were people who participated in the process who were supportive of the airport. What we've done is simply record and report what we heard. I think that in terms of balance, the document to source is the staff report, which speaks about the RISA compliance as the critical milestone in terms of the airport continuing to operate.
Well, even on the staff report, the support for the airport is pretty feeble. Now, let's look at the lease extension, and you're asking here not to extend the lease, and you need robust public consultation. I have a list here of dozens of consultations over the airport, its role on the lakefront, its role in Toronto, keep it, close it. At what point do we stop the consultations and get on with it already? I mean, it's been debated for decades, and you're asking for more consultation on something that I would consider to be decided policy?
Through the speaker, I would draw your attention to recommendation three, which does recommend additional public and stakeholder engagement. And, you know, staff will take counsel direction on whether this engagement could happen or should happen. I think it's important to point out that there are many opinions about the airport, and it will take time for staff to hear from all of the parties in providing advice to council on this matter in the future.
Speaker, I'd also like to add that, just to be very clear, this report is about compliance with the safety, and the, so there isn't a broader analysis of anything to do with the airport outside of safety. That is not an oversight or a position. It's simply that this report is about the compliance with RISA, and then we've asked very clearly to provide direction so we can come back with the process to talk about the broader issues around the extension of the airport.
Well, for a report that's based on safety, it certainly has some cryptic words about closing the airport. But that being said, are you aware that there's over 2,000 people that work directly on site at the airport, and there's 4,450 wider jobs connected to it?
So through the speaker, again, there are lots of people who work at the airport. The airport is functioning, will continue to function. Those are not in jeopardy. We have to comply with safety. That is the issue that will compel the airport to continue to move forward, not anything else. If safety is not achieved by 2027 and these are not done, there will be ramifications through Transport Canada, very clear in their correspondence.
You're talking as if it's a zero-sum game, as if we couldn't extend the lease unless we address safety. Why couldn't we have addressed safety and extended the lease?
So through the speaker, that is in the hands of council. You absolutely can. We believe, as has happened in the past with issues at the airport, there are other alternatives to finance this. The extension of the lease for this, as requested by Ports Toronto, is about financing the project. There are other alternatives to that. However, it is in council's hands to extend the lease, but recognize that that enters into renegotiating the terms of the lease for the future of the airport through one particular item, not through the broad set of issues. But so we're clear, that is in the hands of council and could easily be done today.
Thank you. That was your last question. Counselor Burnside, questions?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you, so in 2021, so three years ago, it became apparent, decisions were made that some decision would have to be made. Is it normal that it would take the city three years to develop that report?
Through the speaker, we received the first report, a RISA technical study, in April of this year. We provided comments, and then responses were sent back in early summer. And then we also learned a lot at the first public meeting of the environmental assessment process in July of 2024. So really, our report is, it follows from the information that we needed to be able to report that was provided to us in this calendar year.
So you felt that the process has moved as quickly as it could, through the speaker, wherever she might be?
Well, I mean, I think since, through the speaker, since we received the information that we requested, the details on the RISA proposals, which came to us again in the RISA technical study in April of this year.
Okay, thank you. In the report, it mentioned about Ports Toronto requesting an extension to the agreement. When discussions began in 20, I would presume 2021, early 2022, was that request made? Or can you tell us? I suspect that as a business, they're thinking of amortization of whatever expense they may have to put on through the books. So was that request made to extend the agreement?
Through the chair, yes, the request was made. However, it was only recently confirmed the specific number of years of the request was refined for a 48-year request, so 45 years plus three years to allow for any...
Okay, thanks. So the request is made through the speaker at around the time that everything got going?
Through the speaker, in very general terms, not in specific terms.
Okay. And with the decision to not engage in that part of, like to have consultations on that part of the equation, would that be have been a staff decision or a city council decision to only go forward with examining the runway options?
So through the speaker, if I understand correctly, it's in the hands of council. The challenge we had is we don't have direction from council on the broader terms of extending the tripartite agreement, so we've asked specifically to bring that back. However, if today, other elements that aren't included in our report, council wishes to move on, including the term, and modify that, we would then take that as direction and as a signatory to the tripartite agreement. You could authorize us to go and execute on that.
Okay, so to confirm, the extension of this agreement is solely in the hands of council and can be part of any motions today.
So through the speaker, no, that's, it could be part of what happens today. You could decide to provide further direction to us. We've provided you what we believe is direction within scope. You could extend that today.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Morley, questions?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you, I have a couple of questions for the waterfront secretariat, I believe, and then one for the CFO. I'm also just wanting to start in on one of the major concerns we're hearing from folks on this ongoing discussion is related to access for things like school buses. My understanding is there is currently school buses going across the runway, and I'm curious if anyone could advise whether any of the options before us solve for that ongoing safety concern.
So through the speaker, there are school buses that use the runway from time to time, particularly in the winter months when the harbor freezes up. And option three would provide for a road that would be beyond the runways, that would allow for safer and an easier access for school bus vehicles.
That's helpful, thank you. I wanted to dig in a little bit more about what we are hearing from members of the public through the consultations that have been underway about what they want us to consider as part of this work.
So through the speaker, you know, what we heard at our public meeting and what we saw through the survey, in terms of what's also been added to the council debate in terms of submissions to committee and council, we see a range of issues. We have people that want to close the airport and create a park. We have people that are staunch defenders of the airport, users of the airport, and everything in between. And it's also really, you know, it's been a challenge, quite frankly, to keep people focused on the RISA compliance issue because there's always an interest in speaking to the larger issues, sound and noise, for example, wildlife habitat, for example. There's, you know, a range of issues that people want to talk about when they talk about this airport.
It's very helpful and reflective of my experiences in office, trying to find common ground on very challenging issues, so thank you for that. My last question is for the CFO. I'm wondering if you can tell me about previous projects that were similar in scale and how they were financed and over what period of time? I know there's been ongoing discussions about the various options and the ability to finance, so I was hoping you might be able to shed some light on that.
Through the chair, sorry, Deputy Mayor, can you be specific, related to the Island Airport itself or projects in general?
Previous projects similar in scale and how they were financed, I gather there was previous capital works required to bring the airport up to its current standard. I'm not sure if there's any other city examples, but a capital project of this scope and scale in terms of, have we had experience or have you seen similar examples and successful pathways to financing?
Through you, Madam Speaker, unfortunately, I'm not overly familiar with how they may have financed past projects. You generally would look at the ability to finance your capital investments over a set period of time based on your ability to pay.
And what impacts are decisions here today going to have on the potential ability for the airport to finance this project, one way or the other?
Through you, Madam Speaker, looking at the option that's in front of us today and the costs associated with that, Ports Toronto would look at the revenues that they would generate or ability to offset those costs over the term set to be able to repay that, depending on the terms that were established.
Very helpful. Thank you very much. That's all, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Counselor Bradford, questions?
Thanks, Madam Speaker. I'll start with our CFO. Would you agree that the remaining lease on an asset generally impacts its ability to access capital and financing?
Through you, Madam Speaker, in any capital investment, you would look at your ability to pay over the time set on the term of the loan.
So if you were looking at a major infrastructure investment, could be in the order of magnitude over $100, $200 million, if you only had eight years left on the lease, people would look at your ability to pay that back within eight years. If that was not demonstratable, you might not have access to the financing. That's a hypothetical scenario, but one that people might look at.
Through you, Madam Speaker, in any financing, we would look at two key considerations would be the life of the asset itself, as well as the ability to repay the financing.
Here's a city of Toronto example. If we had a lease on an office building, as we do, and it was expiring in two years, and we wanted to access some capital, tens of millions of dollars to retrofit that, would we have good odds of accessing that capital to do that retrofit on a two-year lease, office building?
Through you, Madam Speaker, in this hypothetical situation, we would look at alternatives in terms of financing if it was a two-year term that we were, we would also be looking at the alternatives available.
Waterfront Secretariat, Mr. Stonehouse, question for you. Ports Toronto has written in on this, and that letter indicated that quite clearly there is a risk to the airport if we do not extend RISA. Your presentation and deck here, off the top, first slide said, "This is not about the future of the airport." But according to that letter submitted by Ports Toronto without the landmass extension and a term extension of the lease, which they note specifically, "The future of Billy Bishop Airport is at risk." That's a quote from the... from the correspondence. Are you aware of this concern from Ports Toronto?
Through the speaker, yes, we are aware of this this concern, and it relates to not the landmass extension issue, but the 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 term of the of the lease, as per your previous questions to the CFO.
And so the term of the lease, which is a really important piece here, because we've not wanted to touch that, but the letter goes on to say, quote, "Without an extension, securing financing for the RISA project simply cannot happen." So when we talk about the the viability to implement the safety measures as required by the federal government, we have correspondents from Ports Toronto that's saying that is just simply not possible to access that capital, to make the safety improvements, to comply with the law in order to get this done, they're not going to have access to financing and capital absent a lease extension. So how then is this actually not about the future of the airport?
Through the speaker, I think it's 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 not the only option that would be available for financing.
City Solicitor, would you agree that the federal government has jurisdiction over regulating aeronautics and the Canadian Marine Act?
Yes, of course.
Okay. And that power could in fact override an attempt by a municipality to frustrate or inhibit their ability to exercise that jurisdiction. Would that be correct?
Sure, I think so, yes.
Good question, one we might want to think about. Would it be possible that this could be challenged in court, then?
What could be challenged? Sorry, the the decision whether or not to extend the lease or the decision to?
Correct.
The I don't I don't think the the city's choice to extend a term of a contract can be challenged in court now.
If that frustrates their ability to implement within their jurisdiction as according to those acts? Okay, I gotta move, so.
Yeah, so just to confirm, the tripartite agreement does contemplate scenarios where the the agreement no longer exists or it needs to be terminated. So the parties have acknowledged that, of course, each party has the right to decide whether or not the agreement continues.
Okay, two quick questions. Chief Planner, under any of the RISA options, the airport as a use is not in fact changing. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I'll wrap with this. We have a letter on file here from McCarthy, one of the law firms here in Toronto representing Ports Toronto. I want to quote from that letter for your response. Quote, "The selection of a specific RISA option not favored by the city staff does not classify such RISA work as, quote, 'nonessential public work, simply because other options exist that are more preferred by city staff.'" I take it you disagree with that?
Last question.
The reason options two and three would require an official plan amendment is not because they're not favored by staff, but because they involve Lakeville that is not an essential public work. It's not essential.
No, that was it. Counselor Bradford, that was your last question. Counselor Mantis, questions?
Echoing on Counselor Bradford's question, if the airport makes a recommendation that we don't allow that to happen by amending the terms and landmass, is that standing in the way of safety in operations?
Through the speaker, there there are different ways for the airport to to achieve RISA compliance. The some options are less desirable, certainly to Ports Toronto and the airport community, but also to to the city. Our focus has been on the the RISA option, which is has, in in staff's view, the best chance at achieving compliance by the the deadline set by Transport Canada in 2027.
So has Ports Toronto been directly asking for a process for a duration, a long duration of and can staff outline the chronology of their discussions with Ports Toronto, Transport Canada, since December of last year?
I'm I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Sure. Has Ports Toronto been directly asking for a process for more than a year? Can the staff outline a chronology of their discussions with Ports Toronto and Transport Canada since December of last year?
Through this through the speaker, yes, we have been discussing RISA compliance for for a number of months now. There were conversations last fall. There was an executive steering committee struck earlier this year. But the a lot of it, a lot of the discussion depended on the technical analysis that was submitted by Ports Toronto in April of this year, which outlined the RISA options from a technical perspective and and outlined a series of questions to consider. We provided comment back. We received information back in return. And then Ports Toronto had its first environmental assessment public meeting in July of 2024.
Now, through through the chair, I know that a lot of my constituents choose to use the airport for lots of different reasons. What I would like to understand more from staff is the medical access side of the airport. At Executive Committee, Hope Air CEO talked about 3,000-plus trips to Billy Bishop Airport. They and their pilots fly to bring patients from other Ontario communities needing Toronto's world-class medical care. Can staff elaborate on the urgent medevac activities through Orange that take that take place at the airport?
Through the speaker, so I would distinguish between the service provided by Orange, which is about emergency. So if one was in a car accident, one would be transported to a trauma center via a horn, an orange helicopter or a different kind of orange vehicle. Hope Air, there was a gentleman at committee from Hope Air who delivered a very articulate description of what the of what that organization does. And they 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 transport people from remote communities, from northern communities in particular, to to Toronto-area hospitals on a non-urgent basis. For example, if people are needing to access chemotherapy or or surgeries or other things that are not available in the north or in other remote communities.
But just to just ask, just to ask the question on on that one. By not doing the recommendations, do we impede on the necessary procedures that are needed for the for people that live in the north?
So so through the through the speaker, Orange uses helicopters principally, and so those are unaffected by the runway and safety areas, those those flights. Hope Air involves the use of the Porter flights and the Air Canada flights, the Porter flights in particular. So it would be important for that work to continue, for RISA compliance to be to be achieved so that the Q400 could continue to operate safely from the airport.
So for these 3,000, through you, Madam Speaker, for these 3,000-plus trips, if we're not able to do them at the airport, then we would need to take them to Pearson?
That was your last question. Last question.
That is correct, and that's why staff are working towards achieving RISA compliance.
Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Myers, just one second. Counselor Myers, questions? There you go.
Thank you, Speaker, and through you. So I had some questions on the financing piece. So I understand the argument that it would be difficult to secure the financing, given that the lease only extends for eight more years. But aren't there other options available for this type of financing, like Canada Infrastructure Bank? Like, I'm looking on their website, and I see they finance the Thompson Regional Airport and the Montreal Montreal Metropolitan Airport. So aren't there other options than going to traditional financing companies for this type of deal within the within the timeframe?
Through you, Madam Speaker, there are myriad of options in terms of how you might finance a capital project, be it how you might be able to support it through funds you have on hand or other financing options, as you've noted, potentially through Canada Infrastructure Bank or other government financing that might exist.
Thank you. And is it normal due diligence for the City of Toronto to sign a 40-year lease without some sort of analysis as to the future impacts? Or agree to an extension of a of a lease for this long period?
So through the speaker, I I think that's been that's been a bit of the challenge here, is that in one sense, it's it's more than a financing discussion. We completely understand the financing piece. And generally speaking, particularly around airports, you would finance this with an extension and a term that that takes into that account. That's how capital investments and a lot of things happen, but certainly in the airports. The challenge with that is, as you point out, it then binds a larger tripartite agreement to a term, which we would feel is part of a larger discussion about extending that tripartite agreement. So that's the conundrum that we were in 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 bringing this report forward as well.
Thank you. And just to be clear, so we haven't done any sort of analysis as to what impact a 40-year lease might have on our transform TO goals, our our climate change initiatives, on waterfront redevelopment. We haven't done any sort of analysis like that.
So through the speaker, I I think it would be fair to say that we have, in terms of a extension to the tripartite agreement, we have not entered into that level of due diligence around the tripartite agreement.
And is it the staff's position that if we that although the preference may be for a different option, option one still maintains the airport as viable for the the remainder of the lease, which is until 2033?
Through the speaker, the staff's position is how do we comply with Transport Canada guidelines? The phased options, the first phase of that, that option one, which can be built on in options two and three, that that option one complies with the requirements of Transport Canada.
And final question, does the staff have any sort of timeline in mind as to when these further options could potentially be explored, which would include some sort of further public engagement, further analysis on how this how this potentially fits with our other city building initiatives?
So through the speaker, our recommendation is we get on that right away. We bring you back information very early in the new year. It won't take long to develop the framework, and we believe we can get into this work very quickly and and move through it swiftly to look at the full tripartite agreement and and understand what the future looks like in this relationship. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Bravo, questions?
Thank you, Speaker. I want to pick up on the question of financing you to the chief financial officer. You were asked earlier by my colleague, Counselor Bradford, the importance of the life of the asset in relation to securing financing. But you were a bit cut off on the second dimension, which is ability to repay. And that would, is it accurate that that relates to the a business plan operationally to be able to recover the through revenue, the investment that's been made in capital?
Through you, Madam Speaker, that's absolutely correct. That would be a consideration in the repayment plan.
Okay. And I'm not sure who'd ask this one, too, but following up on that, while this was clearly not on the radar, according to all of the documents that indicate the consultation piece, there was no question around the lease extension, and this wasn't sort of flagged during that process. There is now, this had been brought before us in terms of the debate here. Do we know from Ports Toronto what the business plan is at this time? Do we know how it intends to repay the the financial investment into the into the capital pieces that are required here? Because the 40-lease extension, to my mind, also should involve questions about a business plan to operate. Is that is that available at this time? Does anyone know?
Through the speaker, we have received general information from Ports Toronto about its its approach on on business matters. It would use the airport improvement fee, for example, as a revenue towards paying back debt. It's talked about the borrowing that it would do from capital markets and other financial institutions. We we have not seen a detailed business plan on this matter.
I ask, if you want to stay on your feet, I ask this question in part because I know in the staff report, it says that the airport, under the current lease, has plenty of capacity to expand the number of flights. But is it accurate that no new airlines have expressed interest up to now in operating additional flights out of the airport?
Through the through the the speaker, I can't I can't really verify that. Certainly, Porter has operated there for four years, Air Canada is operating. The the airport was impacted pretty significantly through the COVID pandemic, and in fact, it closed for a time. And flights are back to probably 80% of pre-pandemic levels. So I do believe that Ports Toronto is is, you know, working with its industry partners, is exploring new ways of attracting additional business. I think that that's very much on its mind.
Right. So that it's recovering, but not at the rate that Pearson has recovered. So that my my next question has to do with what's been asked already. I just wanted to ask a different dimension. Counselor Myers talked about the unusual situation of being asked to commit to a 40-year lease, but without having done the studies or the the looking at other impacts. I would like to know, perhaps, I'm not sure from who would answer that, whether there's been any study of the impact of the planned via rail high-speed connections in the corridor on a potential, you know, change of modality, change people's shifting to train travel, which is, you know, very also convenient. And if it cuts down time, could be a competitor in the corridor proposed?
So through the speaker, again, I'll reiterate, we have been focused on RISA compliance. So any of those matters, any of those those thoughts, as it relates to the airport, have not been part of our conversations nor part of analysis.
Right. Because what's before us is actually just the the safety requirements. So the the final question is, I've we've heard from a few people say, it's just because staff prefer, staff want. Can you comment on the obligations that you have that direct, in general, staff analysis when they bring stuff before this council?
That was your last question.
So through the speaker, our 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 goal is to bring you good advice about how we can comply, particularly when we've received information such as the need to address safety concerns. We are a signatory, we're part of a group of people that have agreed to manage the the future of the airport well. We take that seriously. The challenge for us is that that some elements of this delve into the second part that we want to get into and we want to have. It's not easy. It would be much easier if this conversation was at another time, because it would manage itself. Not for a minute are we suggesting that Ports Toronto is not providing good information about their challenges from a financing perspective. They are. The challenge for us is, where do we go in terms of what we bring forward to you as as our governing body? It is before you. We can, we can allow for an extension as requested and as discussed. That is something that can happen as an extension of our recommendations. We feel there are options that could be explored. However, Ports Toronto wishes to pursue some of the other options that are in the report. There would be limited ability for other alternatives. The larger the value gets, it really needs to be amortized over a long period of time.
Thank you. Okay, before we go to the next question, I would, at this time, members, please join me in welcoming the Honorable Jay David Wake, Intervi Commissioner of Ontario, to the council chamber. Commissioner Wake has joined us today to observe some of our proceedings. Welcome. You've picked the right day to be here. Okay, welcome. Thank you. Counselor Chang, questions?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm just wondering, how long have we known about the July 12, 2027 deadline?
Through the speaker, that, that was confirmed this year and it, it relates to some statistical analysis done by, by Stats Canada to confirm that the airport has operated with 325,000 passengers for two full years.
So the deadline is related to the capacity of the airport?
It's, it's, through the speaker, it's related through the number of flights in, in an airport over a two-year period. And there's a, if it, if a, if it's a large number of flights, so 325,000 a year, then the RISA requirements must be complied with.
Given that there's been a very short runway to this big investment, is there any opportunity to request an extension of the deadline to buy us some time to work through a more effective process in negotiating a tripartite agreement?
Through the, the speaker, we have asked this question of Transport Canada. Ports Toronto has asked this question of Ports, of Transport Canada. And for safety reasons, Transport Canada is, is firm in saying that the deadline is, is not something that is, is flexible. The airport operates safely right now, but this new, this new regulation is coming in and it must be complied with as, as other airports in Canada have complied.
So really, the best fix for this quandary that we find ourselves in would be to be able to get an extension in order to go through a fair process and a tripartite extension?
Through the speaker, I, I just don't think that that scenario is realistic, given Transport Canada's view on safety and the extent to which its operators, airport operators, must comply with the safety requirement.
Can option one be designed with rough-in components for option three additional elements to reduce the cost of adding it later if they don't rough some of those components in? Is that an option?
Through, through the speaker, the staff view is that options two and three are incremental to option one, so one, option one can be implemented now and the additional components can be built at a future date. We do not have information on the incremental costs of adding these additional pieces. There would be demobilization and remobilization costs, there would be escalation, et cetera, but we have not had, had information on this, nor has Ports Toronto really had time to consider, consider that.
What type of assurance is a city able to offer to help with the financing issues that Ports Toronto is facing? What, what would help them get the financial support that they need?
So we'll get the city manager to answer.
So through the speaker, to date, we've, we've not had conversations about alternative pieces. You know, Ports Toronto continues to put forward what their approach would be for the option three piece, which is over $200 million and, and how they would finance that through an extension.
And what is the time of amortization of option one? Do we have any, any idea of that amount of money? How much, how many years would it take for them to amortize those costs?
So through the speaker, it would depend on repayment terms. I wouldn't want to speculate and give a timeframe.
And this is the last question I have. And maybe, I don't know who can answer this, but what role does Billy Bishop play in Toronto's tourism and economy? Is it a nice-to-have or does it play a critical role? Is there anyone who has insight on its current role in our city at large?
So through the speaker, I'll start and then I'll ask Pat Tobin to provide just a little bit of context. There are numerous reports and we've, you know, it has been reported regularly, the impact that the airport has in, in many positive ways for the community. It's not the subject of this report and this has come up, so that's why I wanted to begin the, begin the answer for you, Counselor, is this was not that kind of report. So the absence of that type of data and information means, means nothing, other than we're focused on the compliance with RISA. But Pat, I know there's been a number of, of reports written and generated around particularly the tourism element of it.
Through the speaker, to you, Counselor Chang, the city manager is correct. Toronto receives 26.5, excuse me, million visitors last year and it accounted for some $8.4 billion in spending. Two million passengers came through Billy Bishop during that time, 2023 as well, and roughly half of those are leisure travelers. It's a growing segment. As my colleague noted, they still continue to strive to reach pre-pandemic levels, which in 2019 were 2.8 million and they are now at 2 million. But Billy Bishop is a critical asset for the really important tourism industry in Toronto.
Thank you. Counselor Ainsley, questions?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Speaker. So not to beat a dead horse, but I'm, I'm still trying to understand the financing in the slide deck. I'm trying to understand, so we're, we're looking at three options, safety seems to be a big concern. My understanding is we're not loaning the federal government any money, but each of the options in the slide deck comes with a cost, but it's not a cost to us. So I'm wondering, and why is that in this?
Good question.
Through you, Madam Speaker. Each of the different options have a different cost and associated with that different cost is the, the terms that you would require to make repayment. So at a lower cost value, feasibly, you could look at a repayment within the existing agreement timelines, depending on what the terms are, what the repayment amounts would be, the initial, you know, investments that would be made outside of financing versus a larger cost would require a longer period of time to repay, which would be outside of the existing agreement.
Yeah. And so I guess I'm trying to understand, Mr. Conforti, is like, not to be facetious, but why do we care about that? Like, it's the federal government going out, getting the loans or they, financing, we're not doing any of the financing, so why is that relevant to us today?
Through you, Madam Speaker. The ability to secure financing through financial institutions would have a set term tied to it. If that set term extends beyond the existing agreement, there would be challenges in being able to secure that financing to do the work.
So option one, two, or three, depending on which option we think they should be doing, is going to make it easier for them to get long-term financing?
The different options, given that each of them come with different costs, would have different financing requirements and term requirements associated with that financing.
Yeah. But I get all that, but why is it relevant to us?
So what would be relevant to us would be the ability to, to carry out the work that's required to meet the safety requirements and considering that against other considerations that may need to be had specific to the existing agreement.
Okay. All right.
Through, through the speaker, I'll add that, you know, it, in, the achievement of RISA compliance, which requires the financing, is, is the, the key to the airport continuing to operate.
Yeah. And I understand all that. Well, we have three options that we're being looked at to consider, but we keep talking about the financing of each one, although the financing isn't relevant to anything that we're doing. We're not loaning the federal government or Ports Toronto money. We're not involved in the financing, so I don't understand why it keeps coming up. So I don't need an answer. It's okay. So my next question, I'm trying to understand the, the public consultation process. So I'll use my ward as an example in Eastern Toronto, Southeastern Toronto. So there was an online survey. Ports Toronto did two public consultation meetings, I understand, and then the only one that the City of Toronto did, and at the tail end of the period, was in downtown Toronto. So I'm trying to understand why we only did one meeting at the tail end of the consultation. And so for residents in Scarborough, if they didn't do the online survey, they were expected to go to the Anna Care Centre somehow. I don't understand why we wouldn't have had more consultations across Toronto if this is like a citywide used airport.
So through the, through the speaker, the consultation engagement that was done by Ports Toronto, that is being done by Ports Toronto is, is essential because it is the project proponent and it, as the project proponent, as the manager of an EA process, it, it is required to do public engagement. The, the, the meeting that we had and the survey that we organized was about providing an outlet, one outlet for public feedback, stakeholder feedback to inform the report that is before you today. In terms of the go-forward, the framework report that we'll come back with next year, we'll talk about process, stakeholder and public engagement objectives. Staff would see this as a citywide issue and we would want to cover more geography than just what was covered this year, similar to what was done in 2014 or in the lead-up to 2014 associated with the Porter proposal.
Thank you. Counselor Crisanti, questions?
Yes, Speaker. Thank you. So at the risk of belaboring the question that Counselor Ainsley asked about the, the financing and so on, I, I think we still need a little bit more clarification. I'm going to go back to a comment I heard from the city manager, maybe 10 minutes ago, when I believe you said that whichever option is chosen, that it's going to have to be amortized over a long period of time. So can, so again, I want to just clarify, you know, at the risk of also, you know, sounding like the commercial on TV, who's paying for this? So maybe you could just pick up on the amortization part.
So through the speaker, Ports Toronto will be required, will be responsible for the financing of this. This is not a city approach and my comments were about some of the, the more costly options that are outlined. It would require a much longer amortization. If you're talking about a 200 million plus project, there's, there's, there's no pathway that myself or the CFO could see that that would fit into a shorter timeframe.
Okay. So the taxpayer doesn't touch this, that this is all Ports and financed through them. So, and again, it's been made clear in the report and, and also in the presentation, these are concept designs. So I, I think the likelihood of the 61 million to the 171, 75 million dollar option, that can likely increase by, you know, 20, 30, 40%. The cost could be even more when we're ready to put shovel in the ground.
Through the speaker, it's, it's not uncommon for Class D estimates to, to, to go up as we get the detailed designs, not we, but as the proponent, we get the detailed designs.
And thank you. And what, what is Ports' preferred approach at this point? Do we have that clear?
Through the speaker, they've indicated the option three, the full, the full option three was what the request was and that coincided with the request for the extension term within the, the tripartite agreement.
And, and doesn't make sense, I looked at option three and personally, I really like it. There's some great opt, or additional amenities, if you want to call it that, that are necessary and that I think the public would really embrace. And, and when you do this kind of a project and you're in the planning stage, you know, once you're into it, you're best to roll everything out at one time. If we piecemeal it, the cost will continue to escalate over time. Is there no possibility of seriously looking at RISA three and, and also having some wording to the effect that, we know this, this airport and how it serves Torontonians and the GTA and words to the effect that, yeah, this is, the, the lease will be extended. Of course, the terms and conditions have to be discussed and debated at a different meeting, but we could have wording to the effect that that is something that we would agree to.
So through the speaker, if council wishes to provide additional instruction to staff to negotiate an extension to the lease term, great. That would then, that would then not be open for rediscussion as part of a larger set of discussions. That part of it would not be part of our tripartite agreement discussion. So the term would be set and we'd be looking at other things within the tripartite agreement, of which there's lots.
Sure.
That we would then do through the, the longer process. But just to be clear, there would be no ability to go back on the term because that would then coincide with the financing options.
It sounds like we're digging our heels on, on, on option one. And, and why is it that we're doing that? Why not leave those options to them? They're, they're running it. They have, they've made some, you know, they've provided two other sensible options, option three being, from what I see, the most sensible because it deals with other necessary things that need to happen roughly in and around the same time, sound barriers, underground utilities and, and, and so on. Why not give them the flexibility, let them operate in the way they need to, when they go for financing, go for everything they need and we support it along the way and our three partners would support it along the way.
So through the speaker, our, our recommendations are based on where we feel lease risk, given the timeframe exists. And as, as been mentioned by our chief planner, there are additional processes, we believe, for options two and three, from a planning perspective, that adds time. The second piece is because we're not recommending an extension of the lease agreement because we think the council really needs to give us direction on the extension of the tripartite agreement. We also wanted to, to say that we believe there is an option that can work without the extension and still have full compliance with the, the safety requirements.
Thank you, Speaker.
Counselor Sacks, questions?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, for the city manager, does recommendation three, in your view, imply approval today for extending the operation of the airport after 2033?
So through the speaker, it simply says that we need to, we need to talk about the, the, the tripartite agreement and so it, all of those discussions would come back here. And so if there is, if that, if the conclusion of those discussions was not to the satisfaction of council, that would lead us to a different discussion. But we would be entering into it to look at how we would modernize and extend the tripartite agreement.
Okay. But my question is, does the current recommendation imply, give the airport comfort, that we will allow them to operate after 2033? Is that in the existing recommendation or not?
Through the speaker, that would be our, our premise going into those negotiations, yes.
Okay. So in your view, recommendation three does imply that we will, assuming we can reach an agreement, allow the, the airport to operate after 2033?
Through the speaker, correct.
All right. And in your view, have we consulted the public on that question?
Through the speaker, not in the immediate term, no. I think, and I'm, I'm careful here because I don't have the full history, but I think over the course of history, those questions have been asked, but we have not asked any of those questions because this has been simply about complying with a safety standard. In the absence of the requirement to comply with this, would this discussion even be happening at this stage? I don't know.
Right. So we haven't consulted the public explicitly on it and we haven't consulted the public explicitly on what types of aviation we should allow at this location, correct? We haven't discussed whether we should allow billionaire private planes. We haven't discussed the types of choices that could be held. We haven't had that conversation yet.
Through the speaker, no, we have not.
Right. And in particular, the agreement right now calls for this to be a general aviation airport is private planes plus some limited commercial. We haven't discussed with the public whether we want to have continuing private planes at this airport burning leaded gas, right?
Through the speaker, no, those would be the kinds of conversations that would happen.
Right. But right now, the private planes at this location are burning leaded, leaded fuel, lead being a neurotoxin with lifelong impacts on the health of people exposed to it, right?
Through the speaker, that, that is my understanding.
Okay. And lead is an element. It never disappears. It doesn't just damage the people it falls on, it damages people who are exposed to it year after year after year, correct?
Through the speaker, correct. And, and one of the real principles that we would enter into this conversation is the environmental concerns, in the broadest sense of the environmental concerns for the airport, for sure.
Right. And that includes the air quality concerns, which have been well documented and have serious, can have serious adverse effects on people.
Through the speaker, correct. This would be a chance to modernize our agreement and really bring it in line with some of the other things that we're trying to accomplish as a city. the other things that we're trying to accomplish as a city.
So what would you have to do before you can bring to us an explicit recommendation on whether we should continue to have an airport on these lands?
So through the speaker, we've recommended a sort of two-phase approach to that. One is to bring you back the framework for the discussion, to talk about the areas that we will be exploring, both to do some technical analysis, as you suggested in a couple of areas, and then the second piece is the timeframe for the discussions with the parties that would be involved in it. So the first piece to come back is the framework for those discussions and then we would enter into that process and bring back the results.
Right, Mr Johnson, doesn't that expose the airport, the airlines, the pilots, the residents, everyone who has to make long-term decisions to a prolonged period of uncertainty as to the future of the airport? Is it going to be airports, is it going to be parks, is it going to be something else?
So through the speaker, you know, I think I've answered what the premise entering into it is. So the, you know, is it a wide-open question? It's not a greenfield exercise, we're looking to modernize an agreement. The second piece is, this is not something that needs to take years and years to complete. We can get on it and do this work in fairly short order. I do believe, however, though, it does require some analysis, it does require some due diligence, it does require some engagement, and that can't happen in days and weeks, it's going to take some months to make that happen.
Thank you, that's it. That was your last question. Councillor Candevale, questions?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and through you, to pick up on some of the earlier questions about public consultation, through you to staff, to start broadly, does this, do staff view this issue as a citywide issue?
Through the speaker, yes.
Thank you. My understanding is the notice for public consultation was issued eight days prior to the meeting, is that correct?
So through the speaker, sorry, councillor, I took your previous question to talk about engagement in the future. David will have to answer the question about the engagement we just went through.
So through the speaker, yes, the notice was just eight days, that sounds right. Not ideal, we, staff admit that, not consistent with city of Toronto best practices in terms of stakeholder and community engagement.
And I understand the location of the consultation was a challenge for folks who may not live in the near, in the vicinity. Was that, were those challenges, were staff aware that the location would pose a challenge to the residents from across the city?
Through the speaker, you know, we needed to find a room that was large enough and available and so that's where we ended up at Exhibition Place. You know, I think in the future, we would want to have meetings in other parts of the city and then also online.
Fair enough. Was there any attempt made by staff to livestream the meeting for folks who would be unavailable or unable to attend in person?
Through the speaker, no, we settled on an in-person meeting only with the survey to.
But to clarify for the public, we do have the technology to livestream a meeting as we do with other public consultations?
That is correct.
Okay. Were there any attempts to coordinate a virtual public consultation in light of the difficulties of livestreaming it? Were there any attempts to create an online Zoom or WebEx option?
Through the speaker, we did not offer that option.
With many public consultations, and I see this locally with city staff from PFR seeking community feedback on park revitalization, paid ads are placed in social media for surveys. Was the survey conducted by staff? Did staff utilize any paid promotion?
Through the speaker, we did, we did make use of city of Toronto social media, but I do not believe that we placed ads.
Do you think if we're placing paid ads on park feedback, do you think for an issue of significant impact that is truly citywide, would that, would it be fair to say that should also receive paid ad promotion on the survey?
Through the speaker, going forward and as we talk about the tripartite agreement and moving forward on that, it will be a very robust process. There will be paid ads, there will be locations in parts of the city, different parts of the city. So I think moving forward on the real questions that will be of importance to the city of Toronto, we will be following that practice.
Thank you. And in light of the survey, the two-question survey, do staff believe that's an exhaustive, the two questions, exhaustive set of questions to elicit feedback from the body public?
Through the speaker, the, we, the staff worked on the two questions, first of all, to try and get respondents to the survey and public meeting participants to focus on the RISA issue. And then the second question was used as a vehicle for people to provide comment on the broader set of issues that we would want to be part of the more comprehensive conversation about the future of the airport.
Thank you. Lastly, on the water, the second question framed the consultation and the question around the waterfront. Do staff believe this is strictly a waterfront issue?
That was your last question?
Through the speakers, I think staff are of the view that it is at the same time a waterfront issue, a downtown issue, and a citywide issue, and actually a regional issue as well.
Okay, thank you. We're recessed at 2 o'clock.